Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the July 17 Action Meeting to order, and I believe we are starting with a video this evening.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News update. Well, it feels like school just ended yesterday, but while students are enjoying a well-deserved summer break, the action across the district is nonstop. The morning after commencement, construction crews kicked off a new chapter at North Penn High School. Temporary classrooms are being framed and installed, ensuring students will be ready to learn this fall without missing a beat. The pool renovation project is making a splash with fast progress, and bidding is now open for Phase Two of this major transformation. And keeping a watchful eye over all this hustle, our very own resident red-tailed hawk, often seen circling the skies above North Penn High School. Staff have spotted the feathered guardian soaring above the construction zone, almost as if giving its nod of approval to the district's forward flight into the future. As the hawk glides across campus, it might also spot facilities teams hard at work in every building, cleaning, repairing, and prepping each classroom for the 2025-26 school year. That same North Penn energy is alive in our summer programs. From fastballs at the Knights baseball camp, to page-turning moments at Spark, Reading, ELD, and ESY camps, students across the district are embracing new challenges and building their skills. While the hawk catches thermals overhead, our food service team is keeping things grounded, continuing the summer feeding program to make sure every student has access to nutritious meals even in the off-season. In the transportation department, crews are inspecting buses, mapping routes, and providing reliable service to support all of our programs this summer. As the hawk's wings stretch over the North Penn High School skyline, something looks a little different. Four of the five iconic WNPV radio towers have been taken down to make room for construction staging. Fear not, WNPV is still broadcasting loud and clear from the one remaining tower. You can tune into 98.5 FM, 1440 AM, or stream it anywhere in the world off the WNPV app. From maintenance to principals, coaches to custodians, all are hard at work, soaring toward another strong school year. That's it for this North Penn News update, reminding you to look up. You never know what progress our hawk might be seeing as it flies overhead. For all these stories and more, visit youtube.com/NPTV. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Action Meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience will limit their questions and comments to three minutes. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country. I pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that wonderfully informative, exciting video, and can't wait to see more video of the hawk already. We did hear the guidelines for Audience of Citizens. Would anyone like to make public comment at this time? Good evening.
Jason Lanier Lansdale. I want to kind of pick up where I talked a couple weeks ago regarding the Option II pricing for the new high school project. In pulling the document, this is what Option II was. This is what everybody thought they were voting on. Included in that $236 million number is $15 million for mods and $3 million to buy an off-site land for a transportation building. I'm pretty sure we're not having any temporary modular classrooms at the high school. Am I right about that? And we're not buying an off-site transportation site. So that's $18 million that this $236 million number needs to be reduced by to kind of figure out where we are. That is the budget which everybody voted for, right? Am I right about this? Am I speaking out of term here? Here, I'll do the math for you, okay? 236 minus 15 minus 3. We're supposed to be at 218, 36, 25, right? That is where our new number should be starting. And according to the last FNO meeting, we're up near $259 million is what we're anticipating spending. So we went from 236, which got dropped down to 218, and now we're up to 259. The math on that, 259 minus 218 gives us $41 million over what it should be. Is there an explanation as to why it is $41 million more than what we voted for? Seriously, I'm wanting to know, why are we $41 million higher? No explanation? We're just going to continue to spend money, burden the taxpayer, without any explanation? Nothing. $41 million higher, not an issue. Now, I'm not going to talk about what's going on with the movie sale lots and the fact that we're not obeying a court order to release that information, or why we didn't take the highest bid for development. I don't know about all that. Haven't been able to figure out what's going on there. But I can figure this out, because this is black and white numbers and red. $41 million. Why are we $41 million over? And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Mr. Lanier, I'm really disappointed that that's what you would show us this evening, because you've been to every meeting and you know what the accurate information is. So I'm going to ask Dr. Bauer to speak to it now.
So I'll wait to see if there's any more public comment. If you don't mind, President McMurtry.
Fine by me. Anyone else like to make public comment this evening?
Had some interesting information that Jason shared. I'm curious to hear what you have to say about that, because it does seem like a really big gap, especially between the savings and the original numbers after the referendum was voted down. So I don't know where the discrepancies lie when it comes to the budgeting, the funding. I'm not here to make accusations, but I think it is something people are curious about. Because as I said before, when you constantly spend and you constantly raise taxes, you do constantly hurt people in the community as well. I know you do tax rebates for some property owners. That's fine, but that doesn't help everybody. There's also a lot of people who are renters who are affected. A lot of young people can't afford the increases in the apartments that they have in the local areas. A lot of seniors who are on the fixed budget are getting squeezed tighter and tighter. And I don't think it's right, and I don't think we have to politicize everything we do or build to make ourselves sound good. It's nice that you're taking the initiative to correct certain things, but at the same time, I disagree with how you do it. I also think that you should, instead of dumping hundreds of millions of dollars into what seems to be like a pet project for the high school, so you could say, oh, look what we did, why not maintain all these other structures and buildings that you have? It's a shame that you spend $1.2 million on that little medical building outside of Pendale, and it looks really nice. Lot of money for that, but it looks really nice. But then you look at Pendale, it doesn't look so nice. I mean, the building looks like it hasn't even been power washed in 30 years, hasn't been repainted, stucco's falling down. I mean, I hear things, I see things. You should, in my opinion, reallocate certain fundings to maintaining the structural buildings that you already have versus constantly trying to build new and put a strain on the taxpayer. So that's all I have to say about that side of things. I hope you guys really consider the information Jason brought to you. I hope you guys think about what people actually care about. There was a reason why you lost the referendum vote in the first place, and even your own supporters voted against it. So thank you.
Would anyone else like to make public comment this evening?
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Ashman. I live in Comar. I'm conflicted about making comments at the school board meeting. It seems self-serving to me because of my involvement in local politics. On the other hand, because of my recent experience as an employee in the district, I've seen problems from the inside, so to speak. That should give me some greater credibility. My goal is to help the district, not criticize. I'm for the district and for the teachers. In fact, right now underneath this shirt, I'm wearing a T-shirt that says, "PSEA, I Support Public Education." However, something concerned me in my last two years as an assistant. It's the lack of order in the hallways and lack of discipline I saw. In the hallway, students often gather and mob between classes, and there's also pushing and shoving. Inappropriate language is often heard. The disorderliness I saw in the hallways was severe enough that I was concerned for the safety of students who were just trying to get to class. It was also not unusual for students who were late for class to have no repercussions. Some students ignored teacher directives to get to class, and some responded disrespectfully. This behavior is not unique to where I work. District security people told me the same behavior was going on in all the middle schools. Conduct of this type might be the norm in other districts, but that doesn't mean it should be the norm in North Penn, especially if you want North Penn to be an exceptional district. Of course, not all students behave this way, but the problem is that in some instances, this behavior and attitude was carried over into the classroom, making it more difficult for teachers to teach. This behavior creates an environment that is not academic and hinders learning. As an assistant, I was in many classes and saw this to be the case with my own eyes. We want the best for our students, and allowing poor behavior to be the norm is not the best for our students. I do not have the answer to correct this behavior, but I believe in work can be done to encourage students to behave properly in the hallways. One suggestion would be to hold regular assemblies and teach proper behavior and comportment. This is not the answer, but it would be helpful to start. Administrators can explore other possible ways to improve behavior. The result could not only be a more pleasant environment for teachers and students, but could contribute toward more effective teaching and maybe even improved test scores. We don't learn through osmosis, and proper behavior isn't learned through osmosis. It needs to be taught, and it's something that I ask the district start teaching. My understanding is that teaching proper behavior is supposed to be the job of the climate coordinators, but I have not observed that being done. Improving behavior wouldn't cost any money, only time and effort. There's a need to improve behavior in the middle schools and make a more academic environment. I ask as seriously and as emphatically as I can that the district take steps to address this important issue and address it quickly. And I know about PBIS, but I will tell you, in middle schools, from my perspective, PBIS is not working, and there's 10 seconds left. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll go back to what Dr. Bauer said. But I do want to make one point about the high school project. When this board thought about the high school, it was because there are several single points of failure in that building. That building has approximately 3,000 students in it. It's imperative that that building be repaired and be up to date for 21st century education. Not just that, but simply, again, single points of failure mean if something goes down, the building goes down. So you have 3,000 kids, students, that you need to then take care of. So it's been let go so long that this is why we're doing the high school, not just an elementary school, which needs to get done. The second piece is that a lot of the buildings, to your points out here, are in bad condition. And most of the money is spent on what I term reactive repairs. There's not a whole lot of preventative that can be done because there's a small staff, and reactivity is the name of the game right now. So everything is getting older. And so I hardly ever speak, but when you talk about a pet project, it does really grate on me.
Can I just, real quick, just to follow up and ask a question? Because actually, Mr. Lambros made a point that I agree with in that Pendale, to power wash it, would not be an extraordinarily expensive issue, and it needs it. I mean, it's very dingy. I feel students, at least walking in the building, to have a building that looks, is it not doable?
Well, you know...
Like, I don't know. I meant to ask anyway.
It could be doable, but maybe Mr. Ryan could speak to this. The problem is, is that with high-pressure power wash and something that old, you could actually create more problems. You could create problems with caulking, you could restart problems with mortar. Can you help with that?
You are correct. So when you pressure wash a building, if the stucco, especially at the age that it's at, it would end up just flying off the wall. So we could certainly take a look at Pendale and if there's other options potentially for that. So it's a very good point.
We can look at it, but I mean, when we look at capital dollars versus operational dollars, we need to be careful. And maybe there's sections you can do without doing damage to the existing structure.
Yeah, I mean, that makes like sense. It just was worth following up, because it's not exactly a budget buster to power wash the building.
No, you're right, Mr. Fusco. It's not.
But if it's logistically, it's a problem.
On face, it is, but if it then resulted in a domino effect of deterioration for old...
Correct, yeah. No, I appreciate the explanation. I was just wondering why. Sure, you addressed it.
Well, that just being an agenda item for FNO then?
Sure.
So at least we have a public follow-up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan can certainly make sure it gets added to the agenda. Of note, Pendale was renovated in the 90s. The high school hasn't been renovated. It was built in 1971, and it's never been renovated. So Mrs. McMurtry responded to Mr. Lanier's comments, and Mr. Lanier, I just want to let you know, you made very similar comments at the FNO meeting last month, and that meeting was at 7:00 PM on June 30. I sent you an email at 8:37 on June 30, kind of disputing all of your points. But I'll read excerpts from that, certainly not any pleasantries between you and I. I'll keep that between you and I. But to the points that he raised, I said, first, you referenced the $237 million, and the fact that that was our budget. Mr. Skrocky, the Board and I have repeatedly said, $237 million, excuse me, was a basic renovation cost, and the $400 million was the all-in cost, including 9th grade. You and others, and I could specifically name some others, repeatedly asked, isn't there something in between? Each time you would bring that point up, I would respond, yes, but there was an option in between, and that was something that we would strive for if the referendum fails. The meeting after the special election, we publicly discussed trying to incorporate many of the same design elements into the project while maintaining 10 to 12-grade model. And Mr. Lynch also estimated cost estimates along the way. Next, you mentioned modular construction. You have been in presentations when we discuss the estimated cost for those mods and the fact that we chose to do a permanent construction addition rather than spend $15 million. I said in parentheses here, I'm not positive on that figure, it's been some time, on temporary construction. Next, you mentioned that our limit for borrowing is $237 million, and specifically stated Mr. Skrocky said that. This is also inaccurate. Mr. Skrocky reiterated repeatedly in public forums, Facebook Lives, FAQs that were posted to the website, that our borrowing capacity is $300 million roughly, but we did not want to use all of that, knowing what our other capital needs were. I said, he explained this every single time, that he explained the fact that the difference between the $400 million and the $237 million was not the number that was listed in the referendum question. Finally, you mentioned voting on a budget. This is also inaccurate. The special election was not a vote on a budget. The question was extremely detailed and asked if the electors would approve the school district borrowing $97 million outside of Act 1 for the purpose of adding 9th grade to the high school campus. As we know, the answer to that question was no. It was not, nobody voted on a budget. They voted, can we borrow $97 million? The answer to that was no. So those were the kind of the four points. First, that the difference between 237 and 400, the mods, our budget, and the discrepancy between the two numbers, and then, of course, the $97 million outside of Act 1. And regarding the transportation building, obviously, we are still demoing a transportation center, building a new structure, much of which is prefab, moving it a little bit, moving the propane tank, all those things. So there's definitely savings there by not acquiring property, but we are still erecting a building and all those things. Just some of the answers to some of those questions. But Mr. Lanier, if I sent this to the wrong email address, I will, I do have a couple for you, I think three. I'm assuming jason.lanier@... blank?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's mine.
Okay, all right.
I got it.
Okay, all right. So moving on.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
It was stated that, I believe was stated that if you, people in apartments don't get the tax rebate. That has changed, that has changed in the last few years. Could you address that, please, Dr. Bauer?
Yeah, I can't speak. Maybe Ms. Chavez can help me out here. Ms. Hauser has a bereavement day for a death in the family, but I'm going to say, two or three years ago, it was changed to include renters, Mr. Rush. So, great point. It did not always include renters, though.
And lastly, I did want to clarify, because we don't need any false narratives when we have community dialogue. We may disagree about how to solve the issues, but we should have a common set of facts. And the referendum was not Board versus the community. It was actually the Board giving a choice to the community. Community spoke loudly. We had a response, and the Board has been responsive along with the administration to ensuring that we can advance a project for the high school forward. But what was abundantly clear through that process was that a no vote would mean that it would be tighter dollars and would be constricted going forward for any of the renovations to the middle schools or the painting of a bridge, which is making sure that every single facility is renovated in a timely manner across the district. So there are consequences, and there are facts, and we want to make sure that we are able to speak clearly about that. Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to add is that if we continue to hear inaccurate numbers, budget dollars, it will be disturbing, because these numbers, they're specific, they're quantitative, and they're audited. So every time there is inaccurate information, specifically regarding the budget for the high school project, for all the details that Dr. Bauer said so accurately, we need to come back and waste time correcting it. And to me, that seems so ineffective. So that's it. Okay, thank you.
Especially when we started our meeting with an update on the progress. So this is one building, one project. We have an entire district of deserving projects, and that's why we have a 10-year capital plan. We have an FNO committee. But we cannot stress the community by taking on every project. We are going to have to keep up where we can, and every building matters, and so keeping the process going. So, yes. So grateful for North Penn TV's work and starting us off with a video and an image of the really incredible work. And thank you to our students for being here.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll continue with the agenda. Next up on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our June 18 Action Meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rush, and then Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are no opposed? Should we let folks know that Mrs. Stoll is on the call?
I believe Mrs. Stoll is dropping off.
Okay, great.
So since there are six in the room, we're all set.
Okay, great. So hearing none, opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Committee reports. Personnel, please. Mr. Summers?
So, no, that's okay. Personnel report is simply that, standby, loading. Personnel committee of the Board did not meet in July. Mr. Summers will update the community on an executive session during the solicitor's report.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So we'll move to North Monco Technical Career Center. Mr. Rush?
The Technical Career Center didn't meet last month.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move to Montgomery County Intermediate Unit and North Penn Educational Foundation. Mrs. Ramich, please.
Great. The MCIU Board met in June. The meeting started with an executive session for the annual safety and security presentation. The doctor speaker provided a goals update and an alignment with the strategic plan. We bid a farewell to Dr. Landis, who is retired. And our next meeting of the MCIU Board will be Wednesday, August 27, and the full report is on file. I'll move on to the North Penn Educational Foundation. The foundation has been busy with summer preparing for its annual golf outing. Once again, this year's theme is Fall Toberfest, and the outing will be held on Tuesday, October 7, at Tallamore Country Club. We are looking for golfers and sponsors for the event, and if you participate, I can guarantee you will have a fun time. We just began our Build-A-Bag campaign and have already received hundreds of dollars of school supplies for our backpacks for our students. The backpacks will be stuffed and delivered to schools in August. Our supporters include local businesses, nonprofit churches, and individuals. Donations are accepted through August 6. Your generosity is greatly appreciated. To learn more about all things foundation-related, please visit npennfoundation.org or contact Christine Lebruski at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Now the legislative report. Mr. McBane.
All right, get comfortable, folks. Earlier today, local elected representatives and their staff joined with North Penn administrators and some board directors here at the ESC to share data and discuss public school needs across the Commonwealth and those specific to our community. Topics included, but were not limited to, free and reduced lunch programs, Title III funds to support our ESL students, identifying students in need of IEP services, addressing mental health through community partnerships, and sustaining student services. The Board would like to thank our administrative team and those elected officials and staff who attended for their continued interest in our family's needs, for being accessible representatives for our community. Filling in some of the federal funding gaps potentially created by President Trump's newly-approved law, HR 1, the Pennsylvania State House Bill 1505 passed the General Assembly and will move on to consideration in Pennsylvania Senate. This bill would allow intermediate units in Pennsylvania to continue to support pre-kindergarten learning opportunities by receiving pre-K counts grants, even as Head Start funding, which previously provided that support, is targeted by the federal government. This bill was sponsored by our own Representative Liz Handbridge and co-sponsored by Representative Stephen Malagary, whom we thank for their continued work for our students. Meanwhile, in Harrisburg, the state legislature returned to session on July 7 and continues to debate the state budget, which was due on June 30. Earlier this week, the House passed its own version of the budget, HB 1330, but it continues to be debated in the Senate. One of the remaining issues on the table, cyber charter school reform, has been discussed at length by this Board and was addressed by HB 1500, which would add accountability to and curb the extensive costs of cyber charter schools. This bill, which answers those questions, has been in the hands of the Senate Education Committee for about six weeks now and still awaits consideration. Please, as always, contact your elected representatives in the Pennsylvania General Assembly and Senate as these developments unfold. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. Now, Mr. Summers, our solicitor.
Thank you, Madam President. My report tonight is just to announce that the Board met in a virtual executive session on July 13, 2025, for the purpose of discussing an administrative personnel matter. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Bauer?
Yes, good evening. I have a relatively short, compared to what Dr. Waters had to handle last month, that I think went A to Z. So first, I recommend the consent items listed, A through G, namely, adoption of policies, contracts, gifts to the district, student travel, student agreements, alternative placements, and approval to advertise for bids.
May I please have a motion to approve A through G consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Fusco, and then Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, next, I recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
All right, may I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fusco and Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
These next two items are just extensions of bids that went out last year. So first, I recommend approval of a one-year extension to the bid proposal from Annie's Frozen Yogurt Incorporated to continue the yogurt product, machine, and services per the 815 2024 awarded bid with a pricing of $112 per case for vanilla and $113 a case for chocolate.
Okay, may I please have a motion for yogurt machines?
Yeah, so moved.
Mr. Fusco, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McBane, any comments or questions? It's kind of nice. All right.
Why is vanilla more expensive than chocolate?
I just, wasn't it?
It's a dollar.
Yeah, chocolate's a dollar more.
Chocolate's a dollar more.
So I assume they add flavor to the vanilla to make it chocolate? I don't know.
Logic would dictate.
Sorry. I could follow up with you on that.
No, no, please don't. I just have to say that this is a very popular item for our security team in the back. So I'm glad that they're here to watch us take the vote on this, so thank you. All right.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Next, I recommend approval of one-year extension to the chef consulting services, RFP, from Crystal Clear Coaches, to continue the chef services per the 815-2024 awarded proposal. You may recall that both of these items, I believe, are coming from the enterprise funds from School Nutrition Services as well.
Thanks for that.
Yep.
All right. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Fusco and Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
I recommend the approval of a bid award contract to Gorkhan Incorporated for grass-cutting services in the amount of $106,483 for 26 cuts at each elementary school in Northbridge for the 25-26 fiscal year, with the option to extend years 2 through 5. This was an agenda item covered at FNO.
Thank you. May I, excuse me, I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fusco and Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Next, we have two change order requests. The first one is, I recommend the approval of change order MC03 to GEM Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of $5,498 for additional services outside the original scope of work. Do I have a motion?
Do I have a motion? In a second.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Resch, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mrs. Chavez, just because President McMertry did stand up, if we could just not count her vote for that item.
That's a five, five, nothing.
Five, zero vote. Okay. Okay, next, I recommend the approval of change order MC04 to GEM or Gem Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of $26,390.78 for additional services outside the original scope of work.
Do I have a motion? In a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I do like to recommend DDUCK change orders. I recommend the approval of DDUCK change order DC01 to Tamco Construction Incorporated in the amount of a refund, $3,310 for allowances not utilized in the original contract scope of work.
It feels a shame for me to do this and not Mrs. McMertry, but we will do it. Do I have a motion? In a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McBane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Glad for that update. Thank you.
Yes. I recommend the approval of the amendment of the North Penn High School Transportation Center existing features contract with Cowen Associates Incorporated contract by an additional $8,262.70 for additional services as required.
Do I have a motion? In a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McBane. All those in favor, any comments or question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I recommend approval for a contract amendment to CHA Associates in the amount of $33,315 for additional geotechnical services. Of note here, the Montgomery County Conservation District is requiring this additional work.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Resch and Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? This was discussed in detail at the Facilities and Operations Committee.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
And lastly, I recommend approval to award the curriculum RFP contract for the supplemental reading and literacy digital research tools for grades 3 through 9 to Newzella in the total amount of $147,576 for a term of three years, with an option to explore adding grades K to 2 in future years and renewing for two individual years thereafter, with pricing to be determined at such time of those renewals.
Okay, may I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Fusco, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McBane, any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes. Thank you.
So that concludes the superintendent's report. As I mentioned at the top of the hour, Ms. Hauser is out this evening, dealing with a family matter. So with that, I will be giving the treasurer's report. So I recommend approval of the treasurer's report for the month of June 2025, as per the attached.
Okay, thank you. May I please have a motion? Mr. Resch and Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
I would just say that cash receipts in June totaled $12,169,130.54, and disbursements for May were $38,370,114.94.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? All righty, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Ratification, I recommend the ratification of disbursements for the month of June in the amount of $29,131,601.71.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Casa and Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
I recommend approval of the attached budget transfers for June 1, 2025, through June 30, 2025, in the amount of $139,617.61. In the public comment there, it talks about that these are routine transfers used to adjust for changes in spending during the year or to ensure that the proper account code is changed.
May I please have a motion? Mr. Fusco and Mr. Fusco and Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? I have a question. This is probably not the right agenda item, but going forward, when we start to realize or feel cuts from federal activity.
Sure.
How will that be noted for our budget, since our budget's already been passed?
We could have that be a pseudo-standing item in the finance committee. Right now...
That would be fantastic. I think that's a great idea.
Absolutely. Right now, for example, and I am, these are estimates, just numbers that were shared with our leadership team yesterday by Ms. Hauser. So you've read a lot in the news about Titles 2, 3, and 4, Title 1 being protected, and we are planning to receive those monies, and I believe that those monies have been released. 2, 3, and 4 are on hold right now. A rough number for that is somewhere around $850,000 to the North Penn School District. We utilize our Title 2, 3, and 4 funds for professional development, programs for our English learners, some staffing and supports for students. I can tell you that the wisdom coming from the business administrators across the state is to, right now, that money is on hold, and of course, Governor Shapiro joined other governors in suing the Trump administration for the release of those dollars. We are planning to receive those dollars, but if not, we certainly have a fallback plan. We are very fortunate in North Penn. While $850,000 is a lot of money, we will be able to bridge that gap if we need to. So we'll keep you posted.
Okay. And again, if it's something that can be formal, to Mrs. Ramich's point, more transparent.
Sure.
That would be super. Thanks a lot.
Absolutely. Yes.
And one of the things that we did receive today during kind of our legislative breakfast and meeting this morning was that they did share kind of the timeline for how items under that bill will be, federal funding will be impacted. And so I'll make sure that Mrs. Hauser gets a copy of that. I think she's already well aware and has been giving, you know, working with leadership team on that, but it might be something that we can kind of use as a guide to be able to kind of talk about items that are education, education-related on the, kind of on that timeline and lining that up with a finance committee meeting.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. We need a vote.
All righty. No, any other comments or questions? All righty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
And finally, I will just share that the financial reports are attached, and these are reviewed in greater detail in our finance committee meetings. That concludes my first and hopefully final finance report.
And wonderful job you've done.
Thank you.
All righty. Is there any other business from the board? Okay, hearing none. Thank you all. May I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.